Yeah, that's a different Jerry's. Okay, record is on now.
Okay, so tonight, first meeting of the month, Zoom video meeting due to the coronavirus pandemic. Town Board, town of Marlboro, October 12, 2020. 7:00 PM and also there's a public hearing on the preliminary budget for the 2021. So that being said, I'd like to start the meeting off with the pledge allegiance. There's Alan's flag right there. So we could all stand up and. A pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Invisible liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So does anybody have anything to say about the preliminary budget? Does anybody have anything to say about the preliminary budget? Nobody else is on.
Eddie's coming on.
One more time, anybody?
You guys got all the updates, right?
2021 preliminary budget. So that being said, instead of waiting for presentation. First of all, let me do the moment of silence for brave men and women fighting all over the country for democracy and freedom. Especially all our first responders during this pandemic. Hats off to you. Thank you very much. So and it still goes on. So we know that Marlboro. All right. So Ed, how are you? That being said, Christina, you want to talk about the preliminary budget? And then we'll move forward in the changes that we possibly make. And then me and Scott will jump in. Scott, jump in whenever you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to go through all the changes that we made after the. The with Mobile Life. And you know, that that increased that line increased significantly. So we need to, we need to make some changes. To offset that. I'm just going to go through the list here. The assessors 13551A, that's the personal services that was reduced by 11,00536. Attorney line 1420.4 was reduced by 5,000. Band concerts 7270.4 by 4,000. Youth programs 7310.4 by 1,000. We had to increase planning 8020.4 by 306. Research was reduced 8030.4 by 5,000. Recycling transfer station 8160.4 by 2,000 decreased. Social Security for night for general fund 9030. A was increased by 3765. That was to increase personal services for the the 2% raises that were increased. And Medicare, same thing, 9035.8, $830. Medical insurance, we reduced in the general fund 9060.8 by 10,000. And increased it on the highway side. 9060.8 DA, 1,000 sidewalks were decreased 5410.4 by 10,000. And that's, that's just for highway. And then on water side, social security was increased 9030. SW 2133 and Medicare 9035.8 490. On the revenues, that was all expense. On the revenue side, we increased TV franchise 1170. By 5,000 minor sales in the highway department 2655. 1,000 in the chips 3501 DA, we decreased it by 25,100. That was reduced 20% this because of COVID. And that's it. And that brought the rate increase from 2020. 44%. The levy change was 2.40%. We're under the tax cap by 1.03%. And I think you wanted to know for an assessed value of $400,000 home.
Sure.
Tax would be $16.
And you can move down like for the 300,000 is the 12 dollars kind of goes down proportionally, right? 250,000 goes at $10. 100,000 goes eight and 150,000 goes to six. As you can see, these cuts are were like something that myself, Scott and Christina didn't want to do. Especially, you know, we looking at entertainment, the concerts and so forth and so on. There were cuts that we had to do because of our meeting with Mobile Life and Scott Woolley and the CEO of Mobile Life. Because of the pandemic, as Howard stated in the email, and once I sort of I sent the contract out. Was that their calls were down by quite a bit. And so their revenue side, I think Scott was around $50,000 in the negative. And it wasn't good news.
56,000 actually, to be exact.
So we had to look for 56,000 more. So in the previous, previous meetings, we were talking about maybe 12 dollars for a 400 and some more dollars but house, but because of the mobile life, I mean, that really hit us in the butt. So 56,000. So we we talked about it and so we came up with a one year contract. They also had some ideas how we could shave that down. And we decided not to go with that. And one of the the opinions was if we cut down on our hours on Saturday and Sunday, instead of starting at seven, we would start at nine. And and that would be four hours on the weekend. They charge $100 an hour. So myself and Scott and Christina didn't think that was a way to get out, you know, because we were trying to increase it all along now. I hate to be the person that needed a ambulance at seven o'clock, you know, and we start at nine. So that being said, I didn't think it was a good idea. I think maybe hopefully the board would agree on that. So we went with the one year contract. And quite a bit of increase, but had Scott put in a clause that we would look at it in six months. If the pandemic gets better and their numbers go up, maybe that is, we could only hope. So that's being said, that was the last thing at the previous meeting where we talked about that. That's the only person that we didn't talk to was Mobile Life and we did talk to him and that was the outcome. Now I can tell you. Yeah.
Mark is asking, can you tell him what the increase was from what to what?
I think I have it here, but.
You have it?
Yeah, I think it's from like.
Just typing it in for him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
54 to 14 to now 298 to 14.
Yep. 44, $44,000 increase because they gave us a $12,000 credit back of revenue out of the 56,000 because of outside calls that our ambulance was used for. So we actually get credit back for those calls. So say they're in Poughkeepsie and they get called, they're the closest vehicle. They'll actually dispatch that vehicle right to the scene. But since it's a Marlboro vehicle, we get the credit for that. Well, so we actually got a $12,000 credit back. So they did help us out there. So our increase went up $44,000 actually.
And actually, you remember, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, they moved to the pinnacle site and that was a a credit that we received every year for $1,000 a month, $1,000. So that that added up too on that.
Yeah, out of the 44,000, $12,000 was a, we had a credit, got a credit that we had to give back for the rental that they received. So out of that 44,000, $12,000, do the rent. Like Al said, the only other option they gave us at this point was was that reduced hours Saturday and Sunday. Which Paul said, you know, we don't want to be the ones to make that call. I mean, it could have been a $21,000 savings, but I don't, I mean, one call, right, guys? And.
Yeah, I have to say, I I agree with what you guys did 100%. $21,000 isn't worth a life. Right. I think it's been a very responsible budget, something to be proud of. So I think you did, you made the right move. I'm definitely in support of that. Thanks.
So much. I could tell you, talking to Scott recently, that some towns, neighboring towns are double that. Because if you could imagine, if you have a bunch of nursing homes in your town and you're taking the benefit all these years from that nursing home. And now all of a sudden, because of the, because of the virus, those nursing homes are kind of shut down. So I could tell you that neighboring towns are in a lot worse, maybe double the amount that we lost. So that being said.
Mark had another question now. I think he wanted to know what the hours are. I think it's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Is that right? Yes. Yep, 15 hours a day.
Yep, seven days a week. So that being said. Thank you, Christina. Is, do we have to make a motion or do we just wait for to accept the preliminary, which was the tentative, which is now the final?
No, we're going to do the final at the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay, with all the numbers.
Do do a motion to accept those changes.
Right. So I need a motion to accept the changes per Budget Director.
I'll make that motion.
Beckett?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? None being said, motion carried.
Hey, just, Al, if I can interrupt, I'd just like to say to both you and Scott and Chris and Chris. Back in March and April, we were really kind of all nervous about how this is all going to play out. We had numbers flying in from everywhere was, you know, how bad it was going to be and how how hard this could be. And this is a great budget in the midst of all this. If anything, in 2020 is kind of a bright spot. This kind of is because we, I think, all had a little bit of a nervous feeling in our stomachs about where were we going to be this time, you know, this year. So good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not out of it yet.
A lot of it's estimated, but you know, too, we, you know, this year, since a lot of things didn't happen.
Yeah.
We saved monies in the budget too, you know, where we didn't have camp and we didn't have concerts and we didn't have things. So it all kind of balanced this year, but next year, we're hoping we're a little better than this year. So.
I could tell you that Scott looked at me at one time. I was thinking about canceling the camp. You know.
It was going to be an option.
Yeah, it was almost an option. Dire Straits there, that's 60 some thousand. So but we saved the camp. We'll see how it goes. They increased the pool amount. Then this year we had to, we had a budget for six, $7,000 for busing because we know has the luxury of somebody donating the busing to us.
I hate to keep interrupting. Mark has another question. Chris, can you answer that one?
What's the total of the budget and what do revenues bring it down? Okay, so. Well, the amount to be raised by taxes, 7729203. I think that's what he's asking, right?
So the amount to be raised by taxes is 7,792,000 and change?
203, yeah.
And then he wants to know what do revenues bring it down to? So.
The revenue amount was 2469181.
That's the revenue. So the total budget is actually is is that combined, right?
Yes. Plus the 115,000.
Minus.
From fund balance, yeah.
Yeah, remember, guys, we use the $115,000 in fund balance.
Right.
Which was the same as what we used last year.
Last year.
So it's the same number, but our fund balance, like Al's been saying all along. Because we have been being pretty good with our budgets over the years, we are in better shape than a lot of other towns possibly. And our fund balance is in pretty good shape that we could actually use that amount to offset the taxes. So you know, that's where we're at with that. But our fund balance is still in really good shape.
Is Mark done or?
What is then left in the fund balance? He wants to know. And they think it's about one point something.
Right now, we have like 1.2 and that was from the 2019 audit.
But everything hasn't come out of it yet, right, Chris? I mean.
Not for this year.
This year, right. So. And then the 115 more that we're taking this year. So it's.
And then we're asking later on in the meeting for more.
Yeah.
So where? Okay, we're good. Moving along.
Any more questions, Mark? That's good. Okay.
So I like to make, so the public hearing, I like to make a motion, have somebody make a motion to close the public hearing on the 2021 preliminary budget.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? So move. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Christina. I know we spent a good week and a half meeting with all the personnel and directors of each. You know, office. So thank you very much for spending that time and doing a great job, as Alan said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks, Chris, for all your help, man. Chris is the best.
Key. She's the number one.
Yeah.
We go to sleep worried, she wakes us up in the morning and says, I got good news.
Yeah.
Okay. So. You're welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
So I like to amend the agenda to add the mobile life contract. And also a playground donation of $500. So need a motion to amend the minutes. The agenda writer to add those two.
Who's, I'll make that motion. Who's keeping track of who's doing what here? Are you writing this down or? Or because we haven't recorded, we got it. Okay.
Yeah. Ed's writing it down.
Yeah, I got it.
So I need a motion to add those two items to the agenda.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
So move. A motion to approve minutes from the September 28, 2020 town board meeting.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Howard? Yeah, I think you would have to say your name. So this way it's recorded, right?
Yeah, Howard Baker. And Scott made every motion. I.
So move. A motion to approve minutes from the September 28, 2020 public hearing.
All motion, Alan Kanek.
I'll second it, Molly.
All in favor?
Hi.
So move. Authorized payment of bills in the amount of 121,092.74. Need a motion to pay the bills, gentlemen.
I make the motion to pay the bills, Scott.
I will second it, Howard Baker.
All in favor?
I.
So. Thank you, gentlemen. Any comments on the agenda? Any comments on the agenda? Forward. So Brandy, you've been patient. Presentation by Brandy Nelson from Titan Bond on the South Pier project. So. You're up, Brandy. Hi.
Hi, good evening. For your record, I'm Brandy Nelson. I'm a project manager with Ty and Bond. We're working with the town on the Milton Landing Pier reconstruction and here this evening to give you an update on the project and also speak with you about submission I made to the board last week for change order one. So happy to go back as far as as necessary for context. Where, Howard, would you like me to start?
Start with.
Start with the replacement of the.
In the groundbreaking, sure.
Start with the.
Sure, the reason for the change.
Which is when we heard about that shortly there.
Right, it was in July. So the Milton Landing Pier project was awarded to the Arben Group. And they commenced demolition activities in June of this year. And that was a function of, actually, they started demolition activities 1st of July. And that was a function of a permitting restriction. They couldn't do overwater work until July. When they began that demolition, the first action that they took was removal of the decking on the pier and some of the decking framing. And in doing so, what was discovered was that a substantial number of the timber piles had what's called head rot, where those piles were made out of timber. They were treated in creosote and that creosote only penetrates about two inches into the piles. And over time, the the timber that's untreated in the center of those piles will rot away. So much, many more piles than we originally anticipated from our evaluation back in 2016 showed a substantial amount of head rot. And in looking at the cost to increase the number of timber piles versus go with fewer but larger steel piles was very close in the cost and timber piles. We also found after the contractor pulled some of the piles from the river bottom, those piles were longer than anticipated also. So I think Alan is probably the most familiar one with the river condition out there, but on the riverside, the water drops away very steeply. And we found that the piles were in the 70 to 75 foot range, whereas we had estimated them to be about 65 feet long. Putting new piles back in to the river bottom there, we're looking at needing to install 80 foot piles when you look at the various structural loading associated with the ships that might berth at that location. So we, you know, we talked with Howard, we talked with Rosemary and Jerry and had a couple of meetings on the site and decided to go with a design modification to the pier to move away from timber piles and go with fewer but larger steel piles. And in doing so, what we can do is we can work around the the three wooden dolphins. Those are the squareish structures that stick out of the water. We'll be spanning those with four steel piles at each dolphin. And then a number of steel piles that'll extend towards the town's fishing pier. And we'll have a steel deck framing and then it'll have timber decking and steel railing as we had originally proposed. We put those plans together in August and we gave them back to the contractor for some review and repricing. And they came back to us asking for a change order of around $250,000. And what we ended up doing was going back and forth with them a couple of times. And what we decided with the with the committee was that we should look at what elements of the design can we remove to bring that change order cost down to a lower number. And what we ended up doing was looking specifically at the design elements that were being installed to accommodate the SS Columbia. We had two different design ships when we designed the pier. The first was the Clearwater and the Clearwater would be able to come in at the floating dock system on the pier. The second was the SS Columbia, which for those of you who have been following this, you know that that ship is still up on, I believe it's Lake Ontario. And they're doing fundraising and it's been, you know, many, many year process. So it's probably very many years before that ship will be seaworthy. These design elements that we've recommended come out now could go in at a future date if the SS Columbia becomes seaworthy and you'd like to bring it to this location. But by taking out the the fender system, which allows the SS Columbia to berth against that. We were able to bring the change order down to $75,000 from $250,000. So, you know, we we have looked at some of those cost increases. Again, the principal cost increase is attributed to longer piles. So we've got fewer, but we have, you know, bigger, longer, thicker, heavier steel piles that need to be driven in and slightly more deck and railing space. Otherwise, the design is relatively the same. We had submitted for the town's review a change order number one for recommended, we recommended to the town change order number one. We've presented that to you guys. I don't know, Al, if that's on your agenda for review this evening.
No, I I don't have it in my my agenda, but I think we could talk about it.
Okay, all right.
And so that's why you could bring that up also about that change order number one.
Yep. So we had prepared change order number one, submitted it to the town last week after getting a revised price proposal from Arben Group. And that change order is in the amount for changing the design and scope of the project, increases the value of the contract by $75,000. The current contract price is 1.578648, $1,578,648. Adding the change order of $75,000 brings the total contract price to $1,653,648. So we have submitted that to the town along with our recommendation that would need to be approved by the town and then accepted by the contractor. We have talked with the contractor extensively at this point and they're willing to accept that as the change order for the project. Other things I just want to mention. We have, in parallel with doing the design change and working with the contractor on the change order, we've amended the permits for the project. Both the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers had originally issued permits for this project. The Army Corps of Engineers did not require a permit modification and we do have that for the town's records. And I believe it was just this Friday that the Department of Environmental Conservation issued their permit modification. So the permits are all updated to reflect the design change.
So my intent was to, at the next meeting, do a resolution for the board's approval to take $75,000 out of the fund balance and put it towards the South Pier. So that was my intent to do that at the next meeting.
What was the actual part that was actually removed? What was it that was removed?
You have any drawings? Can you show the drawings?
I do. Yeah, I'm not sure if I can share screen.
Yeah, I turned it on.
You did? Okay, thank you. Let's see. So for me to share.
There should be an option at the bottom for share screen.
See, share screen, there we go. Okay. So Scott, let's see. So share. Sorry, I should have been practicing this before we started. So the the rot that I was talking about for the dolphins are these vertical piles that make up the inside of the dolphin. And this is a close up picture of the south dolphin. But you can see there's. Are you able to see those pictures?
Yeah, I can see it good. Yeah.
Yeah. So so the this is a timber fender pile. This fender pile has some aluminum that's been hammered over the top of it and that protects the top of the pile. These piles didn't have any sort of protective cap on them. So you know, over the 75 years or so that they've been in the water, they've just been subject to a lot of moisture and they get dry rot and the cores just rot out of them. So. and the cores just rot out of them. So you can see this one, this one, this one, that one. They all, you know, I'd say 80% of them had significant rot. To pull out a pile in this location is really, really difficult because they can't drive a pile exactly back in this spot. So there's a lot of dismantling and reconstruction that would need to occur to replace a pile in that condition.
So where, where's this steel pile's gonna go around this or?
So yeah, so this is an overhead plan view of what the timber pier used to look like. And you can see each little circle is a pile and there are a number of vertical piles. What we're proposing to do is to really simplify that. So, you know, here's the North Dolphin. We're just gonna have four piles in a square pattern with two batter piles that help break up the ice and add additional stability. And that'll be for the North Dolphin and for the South Dolphin. The mid Dolphin was in good shape and that's timber and will remain timber.
We can't see the new one.
Oh, you can't.
You gotta flip screen. Yeah, I still see the first screen. Yeah.
Let's see, I'm gonna stop share and I will reshare, I thought by selecting screen. There we go. Sorry about that. Explaining something and you can't even see it. I apologize. So South Dolphin though, it will just have four piles at each corner and two batter piles that add additional strength and stability. And those will actually span around the existing timber structure. Same thing will be happening at the North Dolphin.
And the, and those piles that were rotted at the top, you're just gonna leave them there?
Yeah, we'll just leave those in place. Yeah, they're, they're affixed to a lot of horizontal cross bracing. And so it would require a lot of demolition to remove them.
Is there anything, any work to those have to be done at all or just as is?
The southerlymost Dolphin is actually gonna be cut down about 18 inches because the way the pier system works is it steps down at each dolphin as you move from north to south so that the distance down the ramp to the floating dock is minimized as much as possible.
And where's the section you said is gonna be removed? So the that could be done in a later time, you're saying?
Sure, sure. Let me just zoom in a little bit more. So these plans show a timber fender system here and here on the north part of the pier along with three steel piles in front of each of the dolphins.
Yeah.
Those steel piles allow the ship to berth against the fender piles and not actually hit the structure. We're, we're recommending for budget purposes that we remove those at this time. They would not be needed to accommodate a boat such as the Clearwater, which can berth against the floating dock.
So those six, so those six piles aren't gonna be there to protect the other, those main structures?
That's correct. It'd be these, these three at the south, the three at the North Dolphin and then five timber piles along the North Pier.
I think that eliminates the cost would be, the eliminate as over 100,000.
Yes, yeah, it was. Let's see. It's $175,000.
Yeah, it's more than, and also those fenders actually had like a shock absorption in them, right?
Yeah, the fenders do have a shock absorption system that affixes to the frame of each of the dolphins. We are asking the contractor with the framing to leave that framing in, but they won't put in the rubber shock absorbers. Those could be added at a future time, but we are asking them to make sure that the structural steel framing is installed at this stage of the game. It would be much more difficult to fabricate that in the field. At some point in the future, it's much more cost effective to, to do it now. So we're gonna prepare the frame to accommodate the fenders at some point in the future.
So there's, right now, after, after this is done, there's, there's no protection for those dolphins that a boat could smash into it or hit them or?
Well, I think Scott, the idea is the Columbia was gonna be the largest vessel that this pier could accept. So with the timeline of the Columbia, I think they were supposed to have been finished by 2021. They're clearly not anywhere near that mark. It's probably looking to be more 26, 27, 28 maybe. To do this now, and you don't even know if their plan's gonna come to fruition at this point. They're still heavily into donations right now. The boat is sitting up on a Great Lake. I believe it's lake area outside of Buffalo, although it may have moved. But they're in, they're not in a position. It was supposed to have been moved over the St. Lawrence Waterway this summer and come up and be finished in the roundout and it's just, it's not moving.
Okay. I mean, but no other boat, you don't think any other boat is gonna go up against us and hit those dolphins? You're not?
It's gotta be a pretty big boat.
It's gotta be a huge boat. Even, even the River Tor boats, I think, are somewhere around the 40 foot mark somewhere, but not the size of the Columbia.
The Columbia is 208 feet
Yeah.
From bow to stern.
It's a big boat.
So it's very significant sizing. The other item that we're gonna be leaving out that's designed for the SS Columbia that, again, we're gonna have the contractor leave the structural framing in, but there are these cleats for tying the boat off. And there were three, one at the south end, one at the north end, and I think we had one at the midpoint. Oh, right here. Yeah. So the, the cleats themselves will come out. But the structure, again, the structural framing will be installed now.
All right. Thank you.
The, the idea of the committee when we were looking at doing the cost reduction off the change order, we didn't change the footprint or total square footage of the walking area for the public. We didn't, we didn't shrink anything. And I did, believe it or not, suggest it early on just to throw it out there and, and you know, Al and Howard and quick, quickly objected and I 100% agree with them on that.
Yeah, and actually the deck size gets a little bit, it's nominally larger in this new updated design only because the original design was trying to fit around the existing dolphins and they have a very irregular shape with a lot of cutouts. Now we're just doing regular squares. So it, you are gaining, it's only about 80 square feet, but some additional square footage on the deck.
And so with these change orders in place and these, everything going on, what is the projected timeframe to have this completed?
So I just got the, the schedule back on Friday and the main driver for schedule has been the steel piles. The contractor was hesitant to order the steel piles and not knowing if the town was gonna move forward with the change order. We did give him assurances in one shape or another, the project would move forward. So he ordered those piles about, I think it was about three weeks ago. And so they're the, the leading, they are the critical path item for the construction and they should be arriving at the site in two weeks. He's having them shipped up. They're coming out of West Virginia. He said they're leaving tomorrow according to his manufacturer. Then they'll arrive in Arben's yard where they're coming in 40 foot lengths and we need 80 foot piles. So they're gonna be splicing welding them in their yard. Then those piles will be loaded onto a barge and they'll be barged up. And they should begin driving piles the first week in November.
Okay. Hopefully the weather holds out.
That's what they think too. They are planning on being on the water at least through the end of November.
Okay.
At this point, their schedule does show construction taking a hiatus in December, January, February, and then having them come back in the springtime to finish decks and railing.
So as long as we get everything in the water, we could do all the other stuff. There's, there's no issue permitting or, or anything like that?
There shouldn't be any permitting issues. We have talked to the state about extending the permitting into mid-November and the state is agreeable to that. Now that we have the contractor's schedule, we'll have a specific conversation with the state about the pile installation process. The schedule was specifically around using a hammer to drive piles and the contractor found in pulling the piles that it's a fairly silty bottom. And so they're gonna be able to use a vibratory hammer, which doesn't have the same time restrictions on it. And so, yeah, so you'll, we should see the contractor mobilize back to the site next week. I'm expecting him back out there to finish a little bit of the demolition work.
Okay. Thank you.
And Brandy, do you think if we catch a mild winter like we kind of did last year, that they will work in the December, January, February?
Definitely. I did talk to Arben about that. You know, and I was just saying to Howard before the meeting started, November and December are really tricky months for winter construction. If the water stays clear of ice, they'll stay out working. But once ice starts forming on the river, they don't tend to work over that. It becomes very dangerous and there's extra safety precautions. I guess we'll hope for a mild winter.
Hopefully.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Brandy. And we're
Thank you, Brandy.
We're still talking. There's a engineering cost to the redesign from the wood pier to the steel pier that we're talking with Titan Bond about. So we'll come up with that number. The original number was 25 grand. Hopefully we could take that a little down. I've been on the phone asking people for donations. I think I got that down amount pretty much covered if it comes down to where. We'll talk tomorrow, Brandy, if you found anything out.
Yeah, we're sharpening our pencil.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Brandy.
Bye. Bye.
So reported departments and boards, thank you very much. You know, sometimes you can't win, sometimes you try the best you can, I think. So learning experience for me, I think, you know, when we tried to save taxpayers money and we were thinking about the grant that we received, the 313,000 and we took away from the 1.5, whatever it was, 78, we came up with 1.2 probably. For me, I'm talking about myself, probably I should have suggested we go for the whole 1.5 and then move on, you know, since the money is pretty reasonable today. But I didn't. We tried to do the best we can. So now we came up with a $75,000 increase that I think the board, hopefully the board's in favor of taking it from the fund balance and do a resolution next, next meeting to verify that. Okay. My report. So I met with Mark Shulman to discuss development issues, ideas, weekly meeting with South Pier Restoration Team, thank Rosemary and Jerry and Alan and Howard and all those involved, Gail. Met with Councilman Baker and Sean Stewart to discuss potential development ideas. Met with Councilman Baker, Planning Board Chairman Brand and Code Enforcement Officer Corcoran, Tom Corcoran to discuss short term rentals. That'll be on our workshop meeting next meeting. Met with Ken Haverland from Tokyo Marine and we got to insurance risk mitigation for the town. We go, he goes to the highway department, he goes to the water department to park and stuff and sees if there's anything that could be a risk as far as insurance. He didn't find anything at the park. He looked at the new playground. He was very impressed. Moving along, I met with Mobile Life Representatives, Budget Director Will Cole and Councilman Corcoran to discuss budget for 2021. We went into detail on that and the grand opening of the Chestnut project, Route 9W in Marlboro. Thank you for all the board members being there. It was a great event. Seems like they're doing well. Worked several weekends on the new all inclusive playground at Plutus Park. I'm happy to announce I'm retiring from the playground building. It came out beautiful. We finished Saturday. We spread all the mulch. There's some key people I like to mention, but my whole family especially, but there's one person I really like to mention to the board and he always comes true for the community and that's Dave Zambito. Without Dave, I don't think we were able to do it. His machinery is always there. You give him a call, I give him a call. He's unbelievable and everybody just loves Dave and he's an outstanding citizen to the town of Marlboro. I mean, he's number one. So thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate it. So conference call with Coast County Board of Supervisors. Continue meeting with Councilman Corcoran, Budget Director Will Cole and any additional personnel necessary to complete tentative budget, budget for 2021. And like Alan says, it was a great job. Thank you very much, Scott, and I appreciate it and the board respectfully, Alan, as I said. So moving on. Somebody like to do Tom's report?
I can't get any, I hate this phone.
I got it. Building inspector report for the month of September. Certificate occupancy, five requests for information, 23. Trailer park renewal, zero. Building extension, six. Fire inspections, 23. Fire calls, two. Stop work orders, one. Orders of remedy, 10. Complaints, 32. Burn permit issued, 10. Total mileage, 1,266 miles. Total use of gas, 88 gallons. Building permits, additions and renovations, four. Burning, 10. Carport or garage, one. Deck stairs, three. Demolition, one. Electrical HVAC, one. Furnace boiler, one. Generator, one. Fools, hot tubs, eight. Roofs, four. Sheds, eight. Single family, three. Solar panels, four. Tank installer removal, two. Wood pellet stoves, one. Total permits, 52. Estimated cost of building, $1,035,742. Certificate of occupancy, $750. Permit extensions, $1,536.50. Building permits, $8,949.3. Request for information, 2,300. Total building fees, $13,527.43. Fire inspections, $1,635. And burning fees, $45. And total fees, $15,207.43. That's it.
Appreciate it. Somebody, do you want to do the chief proposals?
Oh boy. I'll give it a shot. Police Department Town of Marlboro memorandum for the month of September. Motor vehicle accidents, total of 18. Summons is issued. 84 and six parking complaints, 1,386 complaints and total arrests, 13. Total telephone calls, a little over 1,800. I can see the attached information regarding overtime. Police mileage was 8,000, 8,759 miles. Activity report for the month of September. You can see the numbers there. Full time police officer, 1,120. Part time, 860. Full time dispatcher, 320 hours. Part time dispatcher, 464 hours. Traffic officer, zero. Police Department fuel consumption, 1,032, 1,032.975 gallons. And then you can see the overtime details on the next two sheets and then the incident breakdown by month report, which is very lengthy. I'm not gonna read that, but
Every year, we do.
Yeah. What, what I can tell you is this is, this information is important for our Police Reform Committee to look at the type of activities that our police are involved in. And the biggest one that we are involved in is property checks of the total incidents that we are looking to over a month. That's probably almost half of them. And I asked Jerry about that and that's all about thwarting crime, is his terminology. So we do a lot of trying to be proactive regarding crime rather than reactive. So that's it. And we have a lot more information about these incidents than we ever had before because of the new system we went on to last year, which I had forgotten about that. But we have a much better way of tracking these incidents than we ever did with the old, old system. So we have a lot of good information. Anyway, that's, that's it. And I can tell you, the Police Reform Committee is moving along. We have our next meeting tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock Zoom meeting. And we're starting to, you know, go through the police procedures and policies and the guidelines that the state has put forward. So we're making progress. And I gave you guys a little bit of an update the other day. Yeah. Thanks, Howard, for that.
Thanks, Howard. Great job.
Yeah, thanks, Howard.
You're welcome.
All right. So moving along, Highway Superintendent, would you like to do that, Alan?
Yeah, I can do it.
Yeah.
So a monthly report for September 2020.
So a monthly report for September twenty twenty. Roads on nine four, we repaired the blacktop at the municipal parking lot, a cap and supply. On nine nine, we installed a new block top swale on Prospect Street. On nine ten, we replaced a guard, a guide rail at the corner of White Street and Western Avenue that was taken down by a car accident. We rented a crack sealer and on nine fourteen, we started crack sealing Bailey's Gap Road. Mahoney Road, Sherman Drive, South Street, Briarwood Lane, Post Road, Frozen Ridge Road, Willow Tree Road, Conclins Hill and Gabberdy Road. We continued to do catch basin and pipe work and pipe end patrols. We also did litter patrols. Drainage. We replaced a forty foot by twelve inch PVC driveway pipe with a new catch basin on Anna Place. A nine fifteen, we installed ten feet by twelve inch solid PVC pipe and a sixty foot by eight inch perforated PVC driveway pipe with a new. With a new catch basin on Ridge Road. We replaced a twenty foot by twelve inch PVC pipe on the access road of Mount Sinai and Old Indian Roads. We installed a new catch basin on Belismere Drive. We ditched, we ditched Hudson Terrace. Brush slash weeds. We continued mowing along all the town roads. We also mowed the landfill cap. On nine four, we flail mowed. The pipe ends at Saint James Road. Of tree and brush, remove limbs, our leaves and tree limbs. Shared services. The last two weeks of September, we assisted the New York State DOT with hauling millings created under Route forty four fifty five repaging, repaving project. We were able to secure some of the millings to be used at our landfill. On nine twenty four, we assisted the town of Gardner with their blacktop project. Fuel use, gas, two hundred and eighteen point four four zero gallons, diesel, thirteen hundred three point one two six count, respectfully submitted to you on a log.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alan. Water Superintendent, Town of Marlboro.
I can do that, too, I guess.
You want to? Yeah.
I'll do it. Want me to do it?
Yeah, sure.
Right. I just don't want to do planning board, that's all.
That's Howard. That's Howard.
That's Howard's job, not mine. Yeah, I'll get these two out of the way.
Good.
All right. So monthly report for September, water consumption totaled eighteen point zero zero four million gallons, which is a daily usage of six hundred. Thousand compared to last month, eighteen point one zero one million gallons, which is a daily usage of five hundred and eighty three thousand gallons. Compared to a year ago, water consumption was sixteen point three five zero million gallons for the month, which was the daily usage of five hundred and forty five thousand gallons. Summary for the month. Hydrants. We had to repair hydrant, hydrants on Latentown Road and Platico Road. Meters. Water had to be turned off and a meter replaced in two homes because of stolen meters. Valve boxes. Had to repair two valve boxes on Grand Street. Service line inspections inspected one on Orchard View Drive and two on Highland Avenue. Billing. Bills went out. If there are any questions or any problems, feel free to give us a call. Remember, bills can also be paid online. Go to. W W dot town of Marlboro dot org. Closings five, mark outs thirty five gallons of gas, hundred and eighty gallons of diesel, zero. Those for the month, one thousand five hundred and seventy five. I think that's it. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. I know they had a water break on Western Avenue the other day, so.
Didn't it?
And valve, okay, okay. Next.
Better take this one, Scott.
I got it. All right. I gotta put my glasses on for this one. Town Clerks Monthly Report, September first, twenty twenty to September thirty, twenty twenty. Building Department burn permits, one seventy five dollars, conservation nineteen for two hundred and eleven dollars fifty eight cents. Dog license, total two hundred and five dollars. Water services, total three hundred and fifty dollars. Landfill fees total one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Marriage license total one fifty seven fifty.
Nine.
Miscellaneous fees, building fees, building department, twelve thousand seven hundred and five dollars. Fire fees, building department, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a total of thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty five dollars. Action report eighteen for ninety, certified copy six for three hundred and twenty dollars. Boiler request six for twenty six dollars and forty five cents. Park fees one for three hundred dollars. For a total of seven hundred and thirty six dollars and forty five cents. Total local share remitted was seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and fifty three cents. Total state and county local revenue was twenty one thousand three hundred and thirty five dollars and forty five cents and non local revenue was three thousand eight hundred and seventy two dollars and ninety two cents. Respectively, Colleen Corcoran, Town Clerk.
Thank you, Scott. I got the the big one here. So water policy management. October fifth, twenty twenty for the month of September twenty twenty, both the Marlboro and Milton wastewater treatment plants. Comply with all security requirements of following our monthly statistics for both plants. Marlboro wastewater treat plant. Treatment plant average daily flow with seventy eight thousand gallons per day, about forty five percent of design capacity. Average BOD removal is ninety nine percent. Average suspended solid removal is ninety five percent. On the Milton side, average daily flow is twenty nine thousand gallons per day, about fifty three percent of design capacity. Average BOD removal is ninety nine percent. Average suspended solid removal is ninety nine percent. All the Marlboro plants operate normally during the month of September without any major changes. Or events, we receive the annual D E C comprehensive inspection report for both Marlboro and Milton. Both plants receive the highest overall inspection rating satisfactory. Please feel free to contact us at any time for more information or concerns. Stay safe, be healthy, and that's from Julian Falco. Town of Marlboro Dog Control, and that's by Andrew McKee. Overall total number of poles, fourteen, number of plea calls for Marlboro Police and Coast County Sheriff was seven. Number of open cases is two, number of stray dogs impounded and or seized was one, number of appearance ticket. Issue was zero. We currently have one dog in the kennel. There are no dog bites reported this month. On September twenty eighth, we had. Our eight consecutive successful New York State Department of Agricultural and Market, market inspection. Thank you, Andrew. And leading up to Howard Baker and the planning board.
Letting board review, meeting September eighth, two thousand twenty. Everybody was there. Special works meeting for consideration, a review of short term rentals and modification of site plan checklist for site plan applications. You want me to read through this right now?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. Members of the board held an in-depth initial discussion of short term rental legislation for approval in the town of Marlboro. To address deficiencies in this area of town code at the present time. The board examined the short term rental laws from towns of Woodstock and Marble Town. In addition to a draft mockup of short term rental law. Written by the Town of Marlboro Code Enforcement Officer, the board concluded the following. Three types of short term rental usage should be allowed in proposed town legislation, owner occupied room rental. Then this type usage. Two, owner occupied room rental, including habitable accessory structures situated on the same parcel. Or three, non owner occupied designated host rentals with owner. Designated hosts residing within ten miles of the short term rental property, while residency not required. The board agreed all three short term rental classifications should be required, initial planning board review and a special use site. Approval in order to begin operation and receive permitting. Each classification should also be limited to no more than two guests. Her bedroom and all feelings with no maximum cat. Children under twelve included in calculations. The board also came to consensus on the following general provisions for the short term, for short term rentals. One, there would should be no limitations. Placed upon the duration of the rental under thirty days or yearly usage. Short term rentals can be rented for one to twenty nine nights. Short term rental legislation should include language similar to Marble Town's application process, letter G. Three violations within any given twelve month period of portion thereof will be grounds for permit termination. Number three, short term rental owner should be clarified as an individual, not a corporation or LLC. Short term rental legislation include language similar to Woodstock's. That says the town board will set caps on the number of both owner occupied SDRs and non owner occupied SDRs. Permitted within the town and the fee schedule on an annual basis. Number five, short term rental legislation should be wary of language similar to Marble Town's application process, letter N. Temporary structures, tents, trailers and RVs are not contemplated in this act regulation and are prohibited for the purpose of SDRs. This is ensure that any proposed legislation does not negate any previously approved special use site plans such as M A S stock. The self inspection checklist should require not suggest fire extinguishers. Additionally, clearly labeled water shop should be required. The application for short term rental certification should not include tenant information as this is the SDR's own responsibility. Keep track of their rent or renter information, not the town. The board also held significant discussion regarding whether or not the number of short term rentals. An individual can operate should be capped. However, a clear consensus was not reached. In conclusion, the number, members of the planning board are in full agreement. The need of newly drafted legislation to address the need for short term rentals within the town of Marlboro. To enhance tourism and provide economic opportunities for its residents while at the same time. Ensuring the health and safety of all involved. On behalf of the members of the planning board, I look forward to working together to meet the aforementioned. End results due to the lengthy meeting time discussion of the site plan checklist, where site plan applications were tabled until our next scheduled meeting. Respectfully submitted, Chris Brand. And the next meeting minutes are for September twenty first. Looks like everybody was there. First on the agenda was Pond View, not nineteen Sunrise Drive, Milton. Public hearing hotline. The public hearing was open and adjourned until October fifth. Meeting of the planning board in the interim applicant will complete the unfinished application checklist and provide the driveway agreement between all involved and owners. Next one is David, David and Susan Young on fifty Mill House Road in Marlboro. Preliminary subdivision, the applicant received unanimous approval of the resolution for the four lot subdivision, four thousand dollars in recreation fees were also approved via resolution. Next one is Marlboro on Hudson, Hudson Circle, Marlboro Extension Site Plan. The board agreed to allow for an extension to run through October twentieth, twenty one for the project. One is Cheever's Bed and Breakfast, forty five Cross Road in Marlboro, Skype, sketch and site plan. The applicant did not complete the necessary application requirements and were returned in six. When meeting, the applicant was advised to secure the assistance of a licensed professional. Next one is Independent Solar LLC, two oh six Milton Turnpike, Milton Site Plan Sketch. The board declared intent to act as a lead. Requested the applicant to provide more detailed visual and analysis of the site as well as additional screening to lessen visual aspects from all sides. The applicant decommissioning plan for the site was deemed inadequate by the town engineer. The applicant will address these and multiple other technical concerns and return. Next one was subdivision, Latentown Road, Marlboro, sketch subdivision, the board till intent to act as lead agency for this unlisted action. The board requests the applicant provide clarification of proposed driveways, D E C wetlands and rights to a pond, which is currently depicted spanning two separate lots. Discussion with that lawyer, Rich Schultz, Route nine W, H D R one, Milton subdivision. Mr. Schultz saw guidance on how best to develop a parcel. A question was whether or not to subdivide a parcel for business and residence use. Mr. Schultz told you getting site application, application, site application for review. Nextly, review of the site plan checklist modifications. This discussion was tabled until the next meeting, next deadline. September twenty fifth, next meeting, October fifth, respectfully submitted, Chris Brand.
Thank you, Howard.
Yeah.
Okay. Report of committees, Recreation Committee. Well, I could say as the playground is finished, probably. Maybe this week have a soft opening, open the gates. I have to get some, I think we have. Yeah, we have to get some signs up there about the COVID nineteen and social distance and everything. I'll do that tomorrow. Get the same thing that we did at the landing that Gail did and at the dog park. That's all I have on Recreation Committee. Anything what's going on is if Tom was serious in baseball, still happening, right, Scott? There's still.
Yes, Howard said today they suspended it for a week, right?
That was last week, so they're back on.
Right, now we're back on.
They had games this weekend, starting Saturday.
Yeah.
And and. Yeah. So I went to every one of them.
You did.
Yeah.
So there was, it was the prior week. It was.
Prior week, okay. Well, last week, basically.
Yeah.
Friday, yeah.
Yeah, it's, they didn't start soccer, which I was wondering about, but.
They didn't start what?
Soccer.
Yeah, I don't know that the.
I don't know. That being said, anybody else on Recreation? Emerging Management Preparance Committee now?
Nothing, nothing to update.
The P H C, no report by committee. I'm thinking about what you said, Scott, about my computer being the weakest link, so. Put in something tomorrow, Wednesday, to ask if I could get a Windows ten computer. And also the display doesn't have a camera, so usually when I have conference call and get online, so I actually. I could get a quote on those two items.
You are the weakest link, Al, and for the computer, that is, at least.
That is true. Milton Train Station Foundation. Been talking with a bunch of people to do a ceremony for. Graham Clark. I think we come up with the date of November the first, Howard, at one o'clock. The board is invited, send out an invitation to the board. And hopefully the plaque will be there. According to Pete, I think probably will be there, hopefully. I think it's been made and by the time it ships and everything, I think November the first is a good call. It'll be at the train station also. And social distancing and that's. Look, landing, Al.
We basically covered that tonight.
Yeah. Yep.
Still being used. I mean, it's still, you know, very popular, so it's good.
How about the Marlboro Hamlet Economic, we have no report of that. Meet me in Marlboro. How would you? I've been seeing the videos. They're pretty good.
Yeah, I don't. I saw Sheila on Saturday. Didn't really speak to her too much. I don't, you know, the farmer's market's going great, I think.
I think they had a successful season.
Yeah, so.
When I stopped there, it was, it was boring.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't really have anything to report.
Okay. Milton Association Committee took the flowers down, Alan.
Yeah, I think they got some moms on the way, though. I think they were putting moms out last week, I'm thinking, and I think they're gonna put some hanging baskets up with moms in them, too. I haven't spoken with Vivian, really. I haven't seen anybody since this whole thing, so.
Yeah. And Howard, anything on the transfer station, you and Alan?
Nope.
There's a slight increase in fee on that, too, in the, in the budget.
Yeah.
Anyhow, so moving forward, old business, I have no report on the. Tom back monies for the. Update on that.
Now, just on that, so we've submitted, we've done everything we can do on our end in terms of.
Yeah, I mean, we submitted to Frank Scott's two fifty. Senator Scoopis's three seventy five and Jacobson's one seventy five to come up with like eight hundred and fifty thousand. Also a fifty thousand dollar grant for the new car from Scoopis. For Jerry's brand for the new car, so. Everything, everything's there. I mean, the whole thing is when I do these grants. In the beginning, they they come back, well, you left this out, you need this, need that. And so once they stop asking all those questions. It's usually you're good to go, you know, and just going through all the financial, the lawyers and stuff like that. I just put in a twelve thousand dollar, twelve thousand five hundred thousand. Request for the Milton Train Station Park. And I thought that was going to take a while, but evidently that money is secure, so I just received the check then. Put that in the, in that fund, so.
That's that old money from way back.
That old money that, yeah. So in that fund, I think we got a little over seventy five thousand dollars to actually do the park. Still a little short, but moving along. And that's because we use the highway department and the water department on a lot of excavation stuff and donations from. Chestnut Petroleum, Bill and stuff like that. So every bit I used, I even went back to two thousand and eleven. And that stuff we did with the COVID and stuff like that. So, you know, we're in pretty good shape on that. There are no report on the water district improvement. We discussed with a workshop meeting. Short term rentals next, next meeting. I sent the board with. What we discussed with the Building Inspector, Tom Corcoran, myself and Howard and Chris Brand, sent that along. So do a little reading. A new business. We added mobile life. contract. So, Howard, you made a call, you saw that where they were still referring to Tomback, it should be the pinnacle, so we'll make those changes, but basically.
It's a net, but.
I need permission from the board, a motion to sign the contract with Mobile Life for one year with those numbers that Chris Will Coe had stated.
I'll make that, I'll second it then.
Okay, Scott first and Alan second, all in favor? No move, thank you gentlemen. And also we amended the agenda to include a five hundred dollar donation from Dave Zambito, it's got a kind of a story to it, but thank you, Dave. So, we, we have a policy that we need to motion to accept any donation, so that donation is from Dave Zambito towards the all-inclusive playground for five hundred dollars. Somebody make a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept this donation from Dave Zambito, five hundred.
Give me a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I so moved. I do not have any correspondence. Does Mark have any public comments?
Nothing in the chat.
I think Mark's, oh, there he is.
You're good, give me a call tomorrow, Mark, if you need it. I have no resolutions. Next week, we'll have a resolution on the B C zone for Bayside. So, that'll wrap that up. And I guess it's up to Alan, if he wants to say anything at this point.
Yeah, I'd like to spring up something very important that I've been thinking about this entire meeting. Just wonder if I can get, wonder if I can make a motion to adjourn.
Thinking about it. So, I have a motion to adjourn.
I second that. We all second it.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, stay safe.
You too.
All right, guys.
Talk to you later.
Have a good night, everyone.
Want to mention that tomorrow I was advised that there's a big tree that's in really bad shape right across from De Donato's. It looks like a big oak tree, it's really rotten. So, I called Central Hudson, I called Ken up, who took the place of Mr. Casey and they'll be working on that tomorrow with the highway department, picking it down, so. Just to give you a heads up on nine W, it's going to be a little slow heading south. At the end, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thanks, guys.
Yes, I'll see you in the morning. Okay?
Yep.
Have a good night, everybody.